Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the White Marsh Supervisors Meeting for March 14th. To order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, and the wisdom with liberty, and justice for all.
All right, it's good to see everybody. Just a quick House company. My name is Frank McCusker. I'm Chair of the Board. To my left is that Moi. To my right, I'm Manuel Alba. On Zoom tonight, we supervise Terren and Supervisor J.C. Toll. So everybody is in the meeting tonight to some reference. We're going to now give it to J.C. for the announcements.
Thank you, Frank. New road work will be performed by Penda on Bethlehem Pike, starting at Sunnyburg Road and into Springfield Township, beginning Monday, March 25th, and lasting through October 2024. Expect delays in both directions between 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. daily. A trash mow will be on Manor Road this Sunday, March 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Please be careful while driving through this area. Volunteers are welcome to join the event by gathering at the corner of River Road and Manor Road by 9:00 a.m. We recently had a light pole damaged in Miles Park by the high winds. After inspecting the other poles around the basketball courts, they all needed to be removed. We are working to install new poles quickly. We have two great events coming up in April that I want to talk about. First off, the William Jeans Memorial Library and Nicholas and Athena Caribou Center for Learning will be holding their annual fundraiser. It's a wine and cheese event on Saturday, April 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. There will be book-themed wine pairings, light bites, and grape raffles. These are on sale now, online, and at the library. And then White Marsh Township Day is always a favorite. It's scheduled for Saturday, April 20th, from noon to 5:00 p.m. at Victory Field. State the date and come out to enjoy all the fun and activities for the whole family. Anyone looking to participate or sponsor the event can find information on our website. Thank you.
All right, thanks, J.C. And now I'm going to read a proclamation in observance of Arbor Day, which is April 26th of 2024. Whereas in 1872, Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for a lot of life, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Frank McCusker, Chair of the White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, as Arbor Day in the Township of White Marsh, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to glad your heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Resolve this 14th day of March 2024. All right, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from February 8, 2024?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, ordinances. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1036 to amend Chapter 51A of the Code of Ordinances to add new Section 51A-4 titled Emergency Entry Keybox Ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McEnally.
Yes, this is a new section under fire prevention for the Emergency Entry Keybox Regulation. Fire Marshal Andrew Thomas is here just to give some background on this.
Good evening, everyone. The proposed ordinance helps the authority having jurisdiction White Marsh Township outline specific heights, locations, and items needed for the key box, while also ensuring proper boxes are purchased throughout the township and our uniform. This ordinance is intended to be retroactive and enforced through our fire inspection program. This will aid all emergency responders, police, fire, and EMS with gaining access into commercial and other buildings of that type in the event of an emergency or medical situation.
All right, thanks, Andrew. You have any board comment? Any public comment? All right, thanks, Andrew.
Chairman McCusker. Well, one statement that came from our advertising of it, it came up at the ESB meeting, and I would like your opinion on how we should move forward with it, is the definition of the word keys in the ordinance as it's written. Our thing we're trying to find out is, do you want it spelled out exactly what item keys fell under? Like, they mentioned key fobs, key cards, stuff of that nature, or can we put like a disclaimer or more of a definition at the bottom of the ordinance of what keys means in the ordinance itself?
That's not something nor ordinarily the Board would get. We would give a recommendation from staff from that. If you send me an email or Mr. Sander from my office, we can talk to the manager and move forward with that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Works.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Can we still move on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. McEnally, please call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Moi.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Ms. Terren.
Yes.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chairman McCusker.
Yes. Ordinance carries. All right, we've moved to resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-10, approving the formation and support of a municipal consortium to govern the Water Quality Improvement Plan, WQIP, for the Whisahicken Creek?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McEnally.
Yes, we are part of a regional water quality partnership consisting of 13 municipalities and four wastewater treatment plants, going from Montgomery Township down to Philadelphia. Everyone that has touched the Whisahicken Creek. This partnership is to clean up the Whisahicken Creek. So right now, we're looking at a formation, a consortium type of government, so we can go out for grants and hire and sign contracts and so forth. The Management Committee decided on the consortium type of government, and we are here just to get the legal structure of this group to apply for such funding.
Thank you. You have any board comment?
I think it's great.
I agree. Any public comment? Hearing none. Mr. McEnally, please call the roll.
Ms. Moi.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Ms. Terren.
Yes.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chairman McCusker.
Yes. Resolution carries. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-11, authorizing the Township Manager to execute all documents in order to submit a community conservation and partnership program grant application through DCNR for a comprehensive parks, recreation, open space, greenways, and trails plan with a commitment letter of 50% or $60,000 of total cost of the product of the project of $120,000?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McEnally.
Yes, this is just a grant through DCNR for basically a master park and trail plan open space as well, that we are looking for a $120,000 grant. It's a 50% match. We would be required to put $60,000, and they're just looking for authorization for me to sign any paperwork associated with that grant and for the commitment of 50% of whatever funding that they that we may be able to secure.
Very good. All right, any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, Mr. McEnally, please call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Moi.
Yes.
Mr. Manuel.
Yes.
Ms. Terren.
Yes.
Ms. Toll.
Yes.
Chairman McCusker.
Yes. Resolution carries. All right, we'll move the motions. Do I have a motion to approve the plans proposed by White Marsh Little League to erect batting tunnels at Miles Park as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McEnally.
Yes, I think we have representatives of the Little League here to show the Board some of their plans for the batting cages at Miles Park. This has been in front of a subcommittee at where this board for approximately 15 to 18 months. So we will hand it over to the Little League.
Hey, everyone. Drew Sanfredi, I'm the President of White Marsh Little League. Good to see everyone. This is Joe Felici. So hey, first, I just wanted to start by saying I really appreciate everyone's time tonight, allowing us to present our plans. You know, out of respect for the Board, we decided it wasn't fair to invite 200 to 300 people here to support what we're trying to do here, but we do have the support of the Little League community for White Marsh. Okay?
Did you turn it on on the side?
Oh, you did tell me about that. There we go. All right, just a little bit about White Marsh Little League. This year, it's actually higher than that. It was last year, 540. We have about 560 kids, about 102 coaches, five different divisions, 35 teams, 12 travel teams. On average, we play about 360 games. The problem being they're on with five fields. So a lot of teams, a lot of kids, only five fields. Our batting cage facility, we currently have four batting cage lanes with one pitching lane to the side. So this is the current condition of the of the facility. So as you can see, it's aged and beat up, definitely some safety concerns for coaches, kids, as you know, as is right now. We have ripped turf. We have drooping netting. There's currently no stormwater facility, and there's no time restrictions on on the cage right now as well. So what we're trying to do is build a state-of-the-art facility that competes with some of the neighboring Little Leagues and other Townships, right? So we want longer and wider lanes designed for players' ballages. We're looking for a covered facility to allow for use during, you know, the rain or poor weather. Also, some lighting that allows us to practice, you know, in the springtime when the fall when it gets dark super early. Here, what you see here are pictures of some of the neighboring Little Leagues. So Plymouth Township, Plymouth Little League has a facility, the first two pictures, and then Springfield is the one over to the right. That's what their facilities look like. This is the current site for the plan for the facility. I know the picture's a little bit small there, but it is currently where where the batting cages are right now. Same spot. Okay, so concessions that we've made to the initial plans to try to work with the neighbors. We've added three walls to the facility to prevent light pollution to the neighboring homes. We've added selective sound-reducing panels to be installed inside the facility to soften the sound of balls hitting the bats. We've added security cameras to the facility to ensure safe environment that will aid in preventing, you know, unruly behavior. We reduced the size of the facility and the number of batting lanes from six to five, reducing the facility by 15%. We've added fencing and a gate to the facility to prevent outside travel teams coming to use the facilities for private lessons. And then we've altered the hours of operation for 8:30 to 8:30. So like I said, currently, there is no time restrictions on the cage as is. So we estimate the total added cost for the concessions to be somewhere between $75 and $100,000. So we did look at a proposed site that Ron and team were looking at to see if we can move the cages to a different part of the part of the park. These are reasons why it simply just won't work. Number one being space. It's really the only location within Miles Park that can accommodate the facility and the stormwater. Second is the safety, right? So we have batting cages that would be very close to Germantown Pike. You know, kids could wander onto Germantown Pike. Sometimes they have, you know, siblings that are there, three, four years old, they could run out into the street. We think it would introduce more visitors and be a lot more accessible to just anyone trying to come in and use the cages. And then it would also create a lane in between where the facility will be and also the bathrooms for, you know, teenagers to hang out and cause unruly behavior. As far as stormwater goes, the proposed other locations do not follow the Atticott Stormwater Facility. As far as the walking trail, we would have to dig up and remove the current walking trail that is there right now. The trees, the proposed location would result in the removal of mature trees. And then electricity, so we would have cost in insulation of electricity would add in expense to the plans. And also, the snack stand has an underground sanitary water and electrical lines to contend with as well. This is the alternate site that was proposed, and as you can see, it's jammed in between, you know, the snack stand and also, you know, the the baseball field down to the left. And the, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, those are basically where we'd have to put the storm?
Correct. The ovals is where we'd have to put some sort of store on our facility. So basically, you would have to build some type of podium to put that structure in.
Joe, you want to?
Sorry.
So real briefly, so you would have to, one, you'd be impeding on the senior field below it. You would have to put a stormwater facility where those ovals would be to contend with the water. And then obviously, you'd be taking away any type of seating, and you would have to shift the senior field in order to put it there. The facility itself is 80 by 76, so it's a square. So however way you want to turn the the facility, it's still going to be impeding into the senior field.
Then these are just some proposed rules for the cages. If you guys want me to run through them, I can, but they're pretty self-explanatory as far as kids wearing helmets and stuff like that. That's it for us.
All right, thanks, Drew.
Thank you.
We have any board questions or comments?
I understand this has been going on for 18 months.
Correct.
So in that space and time, you've addressed all or most of the issues that have been raised by the neighborhood residents?
We feel we have.
Okay. And finally, the Parks and Rec Board, what was their what was their position?
Parks and Rec Board, as far as Tom? The Parks and Recreation Board voted to support the plan that you are seeing this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Drew.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, well, public comment?
My name's Ron Seong. I live at 4056 Hillside Road. My wife has lived in our house, the house that I live in, since 1956. I live there since for the last 36 years. If I may, and as I said, this at every meeting I've attended, we appreciate, the residents appreciate what the Little League, what our youth organizations do for the kids of our township. We appreciate all the volunteers, what they do by affording our children a safe and skilled environment to learn the sport. Our hats are off to them. And having said that, we agree that that existing facility needs to be upgraded. It's a disgrace. You let it go into disrepair. Having said that, we aren't in favor of a facility six times the base footprint of our existing homes, 80 feet from our property, and then throwing a mosquito pit, abutting our property. We're against it, okay? They can upgrade. We gave them three alternatives to upgrade, and apparently, they have to have a roof. The facility that they mentioned, the auxiliary site, we never intended to be the size site that they had proposed. We thought maybe three cages down there and modify what they have at the upper end. Having said that, I'm going to refer to some slides. The original proposal on Slide Number 2 was what was sent around to a few residents of the township in our neighborhood. But in their existing, in their initial letter, it states they know because of the proximity that it's going to have noise issues. They knew it right from the beginning, but they still submitted a plan with just a carport roof. And then we're going to be sitting in our backyards. It was like, okay, well, we'll shut it off at 9:00, you know, but for the rest of the 13 hours a day, we don't have any sanity. We're going to hear the pinging of the bats. All right, so moving on.
Ron, they've addressed that, right? So let's.
Absolutely.
Can we focus on the plan that's been?
Okay, yeah. They did address it by putting a three-sided building up.
Yep.
Has anyone seen an architectural rendering rendering of the building? Have they submitted an architectural rendering of the building other than a stock photo? I don't think so. The other thing, has anyone submitted a set of engineered cut sheets of the soundproofing? I don't think so. I haven't seen, I don't think they submitted them to the township. Those are major issues for us to, and I won't go any further than that, but. Slide Number 8 shows the modified plan that they submitted. That happens to be my stock photo that I grabbed. Their stock photo was basically the backside of this thing. It's a steel building. That's why it's important to have the cut sheets of soundproofing, because as a metal building like that, you go in there with the pings of those bats, all it's going to do is resonate, resonate and make that sound louder. When you look at Slide 13 and 14, Springfield Township, Bicer Park, totally enclosed, soundproofed facility for over 400 feet away from any residents. Plymouth Township, their carport, I should say, is 400 to 600 feet from any resident. When you look at Slide Number 15, there's a comparison. There's another municipality that put up a facility, New Orwin up north of Lansdale. Plymouth Township, Springfield Township, New Orwin, all 400 to 500 feet away. White Marsh is an anomaly at 81 feet. If you look at Slides Number 16 and 17, this is what the view is from our backyards. You see the before view, I have Nick Vitro, my neighbor, standing there with a staff, 25-foot staff, and so they're real numbers. The afterview, that's what we're going to look at in our backyard. If we look at Slide Number 21, I want to tell you something from someone who has installed and maintained over 50 detention basins in my tenure as a Director of Public Works. These rain gardens become, if they're not maintained by stormwater best management practices, they become a weed pit, okay? And harbor mice and other types of animals besides insects growing. But that picture on the left is in front of White Marsh High School, Plymouth White Marsh High School, and it's not maintained. When you go, the picture on the right is at Shady Grove Elementary down on Yost Road in Witpane Township. Many complaints they had because they did have a rain garden with vegetation in there. The teachers who parked to the left, the residents on the other side of the street complained because of mosquitoes. So they mowed it down, and when they mowed it down, lo and behold, there's standing water in it. Slide Number 24 is one of the alternatives that we presented, both on Slide 23, I'm sorry, Slide 23 is 1A, the repositioning of the field of the batting cage. The yellow hashed lines is the footprint of the Little League's proposal. The smaller area is giving them, putting in five 15 by 50-foot batting facilities where they're only using 12 by 40 right now. So it would increase the size and make it safer. But if you, as you can see, from the yellow hash marks to our property line is 81 feet, and the detention basin butts our property, and the landscape vegetation isn't sufficient. Number 24 is probably their best option. They get 6,000 square feet of usable batting cages. They're just running from east to west as opposed to north to south, and they would still be 106 feet away, a little reprieve from the 81 feet. And then we had submitted a resident compromise to move it 75 feet to the west in back of one of the homeowners that is in favor of it, but apparently, that's too expensive. But expensive, expense is not a question in my part. When you look at Slide Number, the one directly in back of that, shows the astrid, the artificial turf better than drainage. It sort of tells a story. I don't know, if you use without a roof and if you use some of this artificial drain, turf, you may not need, you may not need a detention basin rain garden. More water is going into the ground than is shedding off the ground, off the grass. And the big issue is, you know, you can say, hey, you live in there a park and it's an amenity, it should increase your property value. It does. It does increase the property value. And I tell you, when you look at that slide showing the before and after picture and you see a block that I'm going to be looking at and a mosquito pit in our backyard. So we did a, we had a home appraiser done, appraisal done of our homes, and the ultimate is in Slide Number 29, that it's going to reduce our property value. I didn't know this guy. I threw a dart when I picked this home appraisal out, and he came out and he said, look, the view amenity is gone to the park, $25,000 reduced value, and the, I'll call it the rain garden slash detention basin, instead of what I really want to call it, but in any event, another $25,000 reduction. I talked to two realtors. What they told me, if I were to put my house up on the market, I would have to disclose that that facility is going to go up. Now, why would they tell me that? Not that we're going to move, but anyone who's in that area is going to move, they have to divulge that information. That's crazy. That's eight and a half percent value reduction in my home. I don't like it. We don't like it. I'm going to defer to a few other people because I can feel myself getting a little emotional, and I promised my wife I wouldn't do that. But I just want you to do, consider us. I mean, 81, it's currently 120, 110 feet away from our homes. You're going to move it another 20-some feet closer and put up a facility that's six times the size of our house? I mean, it's not as if we're Johnny Come Latelys. We've been there forever. We knew what we had. It was a dusk of dawn park, and I'll be the first one to tell you, we've seen a lot of good things go in that park, and then we've seen some things that are not so good, and this is one of them. We're not saying we don't want them to do anything. We want to see that. The kids need something better. But just because there's a spot there to throw some huge facility in, just doesn't make sense. It doesn't sit right with us. And we hope that you take that into consideration. We want to be good neighbors. We have been good neighbors. The township, when they redid the fields, whatever it was, seven or eight years ago, Tom, and they, they re, the configuration of the field, they turned it around so the backstop wasn't fifteen feet from our property. We were part of the process with DCNA. They had to satisfy the residents, and they did. It was a good process. And in that process, it was, the township manager at the time, I can't think of the woman's name, but anyway, they wanted to satisfy us and make sure, because we had a lot of kids, adults coming in our yard and urinating and defecating and doing all kinds of things. It wasn't good. So what they did was, they put, the township put a fence up, in back of my neighbor's yard at forty fifty-eight, and my yard forty fifty-six, and we appreciate it. I maintain it. We maintain it. When the kids go out there and they take it down, I put it back up, okay? But if this thing should go in as proposed, that four-foot chain link fence is going to do nothing. If this thing goes in as proposed, the park is no more for us, okay? It's not there. We don't want to see it. So put up a six-foot or eight-foot solid stockade fence, take the four-foot mesh fence that you own, I've been maintaining, put that, I'll put a six-foot in, and I already got prices to spend six or seven thousand dollars on some arborvitae's that are tall enough to block maybe half of the facility, if that, at least a third. The landscaping that's being proposed, there are too much gaps in between, you know, to put a fence, a green fence up there should only be about three feet in between these things. And the pad site is about three to four feet lower for the proposed site than our yard. So anything that you put on the other side of the fence, if you put an eight-foot arborvitae in, it's only going to appear to be four foot tall, okay? And the building, and to be fair, the building, if it's going to be twenty-five feet tall or twenty-eight feet tall, it'll be three foot less, so in all fairness. So that's, that's my proposal, my concerns. Others will address the concerns also. So I want to do this, Fran. I want to play for Elizabeth the sound of the batting cage, because I don't think you heard this. I'm not sure if Ms. Doreen has heard.
They're putting up soundproofing, correct?
Correct, you're right. The point being, Fran, is we haven't, no one has seen the soundproofing, and no one has seen an architectural drawing of the building. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you for giving me the time. Appreciate it.
I'm Bruce Dormuth. I live at forty-eighteenth Fairway Road. I've had the pleasure of living there for the past thirty-nine years. It backs onto the park. I want to address some details that, especially about the rain garden and especially about the view block, that Ron kind of skipped over. I was not aware that our township was quite so technologically advanced and that it would have board members attending remotely. So I only have paper copies of what I have to present, and I apologize to you board members who are remote in advance, and if I'm on TV, geez, that'll be nice.
Thank you.
What I have here to show you is a blow-up of something that's in your agenda. This is sheet two of the Bowler design plan for the infrastructure support of the batting cages. And there's things I'd like to point out here. If you look at what I've outlined in yellow, that is the proposed rain garden, and you can see there that it's twenty-eight-hundred-and-five square feet. So my first question is, do we want to devote another twenty-eight-hundred-and-five square feet of our parkland to a rain garden? My, and in addition to that, if you follow the yellow line down, there's also an area that's denoted as riprap. That area has not been measured. I don't know how much that is. I don't know if it's above ground or below ground. It's not particularly big, but it should be noted that that's part of the rain garden. According to Bowler, and I wasn't able to get this on this sheet, but according to Bowler, the rain garden must be maintained four times a year. It must be inspected three times a year, and the fourth time of the year, it has to be cleaned out, and the perennials have to be cut back. So the immediate question I have is, who's going to do it? Is that going to be the Little League? Is that going to be the township? And more to the point, if it doesn't get done, who do the residents complain to, and what action would be taken? Now, it strikes me that there is another possibility. I wish Dwayne McCarthy were here. He said he would try, and he obviously couldn't make it. He's much more intelligent about bio-retention basins than I am. But there is apparently an alternative of putting it underground, which solves a whole lot of problems. It solves the vermin problem, it solves the mosquito problem, it solves the maintenance problem, although there may be maintenance issues for it underground. The objection that's been raised is that it's too expensive to do it. I'm not surprised that it would cost more, but my reaction to that would be, somebody quote us a figure. Tell us how much more it's going to cost. If it's fifty percent of the project cost, then obviously it can't be done. But if it's five percent of the project cost, then obviously it should be considered. If you look at the green dots on page one, those eleven circles represent the eleven arborvitae that Bowler has included in the proposal. And they are saying that they want to get between a six-foot and an eight-foot tree and plant it as a view block. Well, the problem is, and I don't think it's deliberate, but the problem is the diagram is somewhat misleading, because the diagram circles make it seem like that's going to be a view block from day one. That's not true. That view block will not be there until about 2039, because it's going to take that long for the trees to grow to that size. If you flip over to, oh, and before I leave the rain garden, I'm sorry. There's a manual, the PA Stormwater Management and Practices Manual, three sixty-three oh three hundred, oh, oh-two, chapter six-point-four-point-five. I think the people in Harrisburg are paid by the word. But anyway, if you look in that manual, it says that there is no state-defined offset for a rain garden from a residency, and it refers you to your local municipality. Well, my question, and I don't expect there's anyone here that can answer this tonight, but my question is, what is the township defined offset for a rain garden from a residential property? It seems to me this is awfully close. I see the other rain gardens we have in the park, and none of them are this close to a residential property, which is another argument, incidentally, for putting it underground. It has to be there. Okay, now, if we turn to page, oh, sorry, one last thing about the arborvitae. According to Lowe's, these things require water twice a week for the first year. I looked on the web, and another website says they require water during a drought. Same question. Who's going to do it? And who do we call when it's not done, and when the arborvitae start to die or fall over? I don't think that's what happened, but, okay. Also, the arborvitae are somewhat resistant to deer, but not totally resistant to deer. So that's another problem. My main point here is, you look at the diagram, you see those circles, you think, aha, that's what it'll look like day one. No, that's not what it's going to look like day one. It's not going to look that way for fifteen years. Turning to the next page, there's a picture there. I apologize, I'm not the world's most gifted photographer, but there's a picture there of a six-foot arborvitae. That's what's going to get planted, and that's what the people are going to have to look at for the next fifteen years, as it slowly grows and matures. Now, there is a possible, I emphasize possible, solution to this, and that would be to plant two rows of arborvitae, one behind the other, offset by forty-five degrees, so you'd have kind of a A, B, C, D, E, F sort of thing going on. It would help Murray marginally in the short term. It might help significantly in the long term. Okay. Next, I'm still on page two. There's an, in your agenda, there's an undated letter from Drew to Fran, and I have a couple of comments on some of the statements that have appeared in that letter, and one of them, I'll admit ahead of time, has already been corrected. Thank you. He says in the letter, this is a quote, I'll read it for the people remotely that don't have it in front of them. This is a quote from the letter. "We have explained the plans, answered questions and concerns, and gotten by him from all but a few. Well, eighteen people have signed a petition against this thing." So I guess it all depends how you define a few. To me, eighteen is more than a few. Then regarding the move to the cages, Germantown Pike. Ron's already touched on that. I'll be very brief. The stormwater would be an issue if we put the structure there. I don't quite follow that, because it's already a rain garden relatively close. So I would think, not that it would be an issue, but that rain garden that already exists would be part of the solution. Electricity. We would need to redo the electricity, which would add a lot of dollars to the project. Well, first of all, what is a lot of dollars? Again, fifty percent? Yeah, you've got a problem. Five percent? Well, we ought to talk about it. In any event, I have a little trouble with that, because there's already electricity out of the snack bar, and I don't understand how difficult it's going to be to get electricity from the snack bar to the batting cages. Also, there's going to be electrical needs in the current proposed location, so there's probably an offsetting cost here. Safety. The batting cages will be very close to Germantown Pike. I don't buy that either. The kids walk down the sidewalk and play in the park as it is. If it's an enclosed batting cage, I don't see a safety issue here at all. And the last point, I won't even touch on concessions, well, I will touch on it. The concessions have added hundreds of thousands of dollars to the plans. You've already admitted it is seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars. I'd still like to see a lot of them for that, because that's a lot of money, and I don't quite see where that money's coming from, but I appreciate the fact that it's been reviewed. The same thing for the change of the location, seventy-five feet to the west, where the adjoining neighbor does not object to it, and we've been told it costs too much. Again, those costs should be specified. How much is it going to cost to move it seventy-five feet to the west? If it's, again, repeating myself, if it's fifty percent of the cost, well, it's a no starter. If it's five percent of the cost, where are we talking about it? Because that's going to make everybody happy. Make Little League happy? Make the neighbors happy? And then, as Ron touched on, there is no architect's rendering, and I don't see how we can make an intelligent decision about what this is going to look like, what the view requirements are, without seeing a, an architect's rendering of this thing. One of the slides that Drew showed was of the facility at Plymouth. I want to emphasize, that facility looks very pleasant, and it is very pleasant, but remember, it's four hundred feet from the nearest resident. So although it looks very pleasant, it can afford to be so, because it's not interfering with anything. That's all I have. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm starting with some levity. Linda Dahl, Fairway Road. Here's my levity. I'm from Wisconsin, if everybody doesn't know that by now. And I used to be on the Little League board. That's my levity. So I do appreciate Little League. That was a big part of my life during those days. First of all, I think it's kind of unfair, and I've always felt this way, that township property doesn't have to go through the same process as personal residences or businesses. There's no architectural plan here, so what is the township approving? There's no requirement to go through zoning, planning, shade tree, which would have answered a lot of these questions with the trees and thus forth, like every one of us has to do if we wanted this project to proceed, having to do with our property or our business. It's just wrong. It's not being a good neighbor that the township doesn't have to go through the same process. And no other township community has allowed, they pointed out, they want to be compared to Springfield and Plymouth meeting. They're not as close. They're over four hundred feet away, and we're saying this is basically in somebody's backyard, eighty feet away. There's no comparison. I also saw the letter, and I also was involved with Fran and JC and Drew and Tom in a meeting where we were supposed to get a lot of things in writing. And I feel that this letter that was sent to Fran from the Little League is not addressing it in writing the way it should be. It should be much more specific. For example, the compromises. It says, "We added sound-reducing panels to the plans to be installed inside the facility to soften the sound of the balls hitting the bats." That's just too vague. We added sound reducing. What does that mean? How much are you reducing it in decibel levels? Are you eliminating the sound? What is the sound going to be like? It has to be more specific. This stuff needs to be in writing. That's what we agreed to, is that we were going to get this stuff in writing, and I don't feel that that's what this is accomplishing here. It says, "We've added a gate to lock the facility to present outside travel teams coming to the cages to use for private lessons." Outside travel teams. So who is going to get to use it? Is it just our Little League? Are we talking about adult teams within the township? And who's going to have keys, then, to get into these, this facility? Because we pretty specifically said, you know, an adult hitting a ball versus a kid hitting the ball is much different with the sound. Now, if you're totally eliminating the sound, that's one thing, but if you're just reducing the sound and we still have adult teams playing there, that's the question that we asked, and I don't see it answered here. Teams, again, when it says about the proposed rules, it just says teams with scheduled games for cage use. Who are the teams? Just the Little League or adult teams? And then when you're talking about lighting the batting cage, it's basically from eight AM to eight, eight-thirty PM using the batting cages, and it says March to October, so not November through February, or it's all year long, eight-thirty to eight AM to, eight-thirty AM to eight-thirty PM. All of this needs to be spelled out in writing, in my opinion, before a vote can be taken on this. It needs to be clear what we can expect as neighbors. The trees, that question hasn't been answered. As, you know, if it had gone before a shade tree commission, they could have probably given ideas about what trees should be planted. If it's going to take fifteen years for the trees to grow as a buffer, that's not a solution. And then we also talked about protocol for complaints. If it's after hours and weekends and people are there doing whatever they're not supposed to be doing, who do we call? There's nothing here about that. We were supposed to be given a contact number. I basically think that, you know, tonight, this cannot be voted on. There's more questions that need to be answered, and it needs to be in writing, which we agreed to. And the residents who have lived there have lived there over thirty years. And the residents who have lived there have lived there over 30 years. The Little League people, they come and go. I mean, look at my jacket, I'm going from there. And, you know, these people, these are residents who have lived here all their lives. And to do this to them, 80 feet from their house, is just wrong. And the Little League survived all this time without it. They're going to continue to thrive and survive. At a minimum, it needs to be tabled until some of these questions get answered and it gets put in writing like we were promised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have some spices?
Joe Felici. So, come and go. I've been here 41 years. I grew up on Cotwood Drive. I remember coming to this building when it was a bank, and that was top shelf. And I lived here my whole life, and I played Little League, and now I'm back coaching Little League. I'd like to respond to a few comments that were made here and just kind of add some clarity to you all. First, I want to give a little background on myself. I'm the director of asset management for a private equity firm. I oversee 30 million square feet of office and industrial space across the country. I've overseen the development of over 2 million square feet of industrial space, and fairly active in commercial real estate. So that's kind of my background. I'm also head of fundraising for White Marsh Little League, so I got lucky enough to get picked to do this as well. So a couple of things. The first thing, as far as setback. Per zoning, the setback is 40 feet from the property line. We're 80 feet away, so that's the first thing from the property line. And the closest house, which is Ron's house, if you go from his house to the facility, it would be approximately 200 feet from his back porch. So that's, and he's the closest resident to that facility. Secondly, noise. The facility's already there. There's pinging nonstop, there's four cages. If anything, what we've hoped to do is improve it, and we're hoping with the consideration of the three walls and changing how the bats are being swung, that ultimately it would lead towards, it's definitely going to be an improvement from what it is. Secondly, architectural. You know, we haven't moved forward with architectural renderings yet. We have met with the architect on several occasions. Ultimately, you know, you mentioned a metal building. It will not be a metal building. It's going to have hardy plank. And ultimately, that material is going to basically be approved through you all, right? So when we submit our plan, we're going to have a board that we're going to present all the materials. So it's not metal. I just want to clarify that right away. And it will be attractive. It's going to match the blue that is throughout the park. Additionally, the building's going to be column-free, which will not only allow us to use the facility, but if the township wants to use the facility, they will also have access to that facility. From an engineering standpoint, we will provide all that documentation, similar type of any residence or commercial property. We're going to have to make sure the building's safe and meets all the standards of White Marsh Township. The location, listen, we hear you. It's an active park, and in the perfect world, you know, we would have 20 more acres and we could make do with what we have. But unfortunately, you know, we're hamstrung. And I think White Marsh Township would probably acknowledge that. I think we would acknowledge that. But it is a factor that we're trying to deal with. As far as, you know, the appraisal comment, you know, I deal with appraisals all day, constantly, with my tax appeals and with acquisitions. And I'm going to politely say, I agree to disagree with that statement. The rain garden, again, we hired Bowler Engineering, actually, I'm going to change that. Bowler Engineering actually donated their time, probably spent, you know, they probably spent, I would call it the equivalent of $20,000 to $25,000 creating plans for us. The plans met all codes and specifications. Those would be submitted. Obviously, it's anti-structural approval that we would need to do for pulling a permit for site work. Secondly, the comment was made on arborvitae. As you can imagine, this is the standard plant that we use in a lot of our buildings. It's a requirement, a lot of times, to provide green screening from a commercial real estate perspective. One, a lot of times, we plant these without irrigation, so I'm not sure where you're getting that from. And then additionally, the rule of thumb that we always use is one to two feet per year. So, you know, the gentleman proposed 20, 39 before these trees would grow. I would challenge that. Just, you know, that's that. I think we have no problem adding more trees. So, you know, I think that's easy enough. You know, and ultimately, you know, you know, I would say this. So I have three sons. I have now a 15-year-old, a 13-year-old, and a 10-year-old. Lived here my whole life. I'm going to have basically all my kids phased out of White Marsh Little League and Connie Mack by the time this thing is probably built. I believe in it that much that I'm willing to commit my time and effort to do this. And I think it's something that, you know, hopefully, when I have grandkids, I'm going to come back and really take a look at and say, geez, you know, look what excellent facilities this has. And I do think it's a testament to White Marsh to constantly improve their facilities. I think this is the next step that needs to occur. And, you know, it's time to catch up to our neighbors and provide a safe facility.
Thank you.
Don't run away. Come back. Come on back. Talk to us a little more about the sound attenuation. What's the product?
Yeah, so Drew and I met with the architect two weeks ago, and there's a couple of different materials you can use. We're using Tom Hall and Associates. He's out of Bryn Mawr. Basically, there's different types of materials we can use. Most of the times, it's a mixture of a, I would call it, a foam material. Sometimes it's a mixture of like a carpeting material to deaden the sound. Ultimately, it has to be mold-resistant because it's going to be open-air. You know, so we are going to leave it to the professionals to tell us what we need to do to deaden the sound. Generally, we would probably put it in, you know, we would probably, again, this is just my own experience, as we're walking in, the first probably couple 15 feet or 10 feet in, you're probably going to put more and probably intersperse it accordingly. But again, we would hire professionals to tell us how much material we would need and do it.
So what's the goal in the design? Is it intended to be designed so that there is no sound outside of the structure?
There will be sound. There will be sound. And the intent of the three walls is that, to the extent there is any sound, it would go back towards the field is where the opening would be, and that's kind of how we're designing it. Again, it will not be noiseless. It just, it won't be.
So where will the design parameters appear? And what, and maybe this is not so much a question for you, but Charlie and Krista, can you describe the process? Should we approve this tonight? What is the process going forward for approval of the design of the building, approval of the sound dampening, approval of the rain garden, and so forth?
Well, I think that really depends. There's obviously a permitting process. If the board wants to be involved, we can bring plans through the planning commission and to the board. The comment about the township being immune from our own regulations, we're really only, we don't have to comply with zoning in terms of use and setback, things of that nature. I don't believe that we're, and I'll defer to Sean on this, but I don't believe we're immune from land development process. So I believe we wouldn't be looking at plans.
I agree with Charlie.
Okay. So this approval is more conceptual in nature, and then as we go through land development, it will go to planning commission, it will go to Shade Tree. It'll have those checkpoints along the way, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And just so, if there's any question, the Little League would have no objection to having those reviews, would you?
No, I mean, that's what we expect. I mean, quite honestly, Bowler is actually ready to submit, so don't submit yet, because we're not there yet. Because, I mean, quite honestly, I thought that was the only course of action. So I didn't even know there was the thought of not going outside the normal due process. And again, the comment of an architectural, you know, where does the architectural work? Well, again, I'm the head of fundraising. We do a great job, or I might give myself a compliment. But, you know, on average, we raise around $20,000 to $25,000 per year through different sponsorships. And a lot of that money just gets plowed back into the fields, into leveling, you know, buying new signs. So we're not, it's a not-for-profit. We're not made out of money. So before I have someone commit and spend money on architectural renderings, obviously, this was the, okay, once the conceptual plans approved, well, then we can move forward with the architect and actually create architectural plans for the building, which we then bring in front of the planning, the planning board and get their approval and sign off, and have the materials for it, no different than if I was taking a residential or commercial building through the approval process.
That gives me much greater comfort, because, I mean, the residents did raise some valid points, but there is a lot of, are a lot of unknowns here. But I think those unknowns will become more clear as it goes through the land development process.
Correct. All the plans will have the details of what material would be used, you know, for the building structure.
Okay. And as to the point of maintenance of the rain garden, do you have a position on that?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So obviously, we're fortunate to have a lot of sponsors. A few of them are in the landscaping business, and we obviously do a lot of field maintenance. I think now, we've been fortunate enough to have enough steady stream of income where we're trying to level the fields on a couple of fields every year. It's something that White Marsh Little League would definitely incur the cost for. You know, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure if this is what you guys want to hear. I know I do this on the commercial side sometimes with our associations that I'm also president of. Sometimes we could also post, you know, a $5,000 bond, where ultimately, if we don't do it and there's an issue, the township can come back and actually use that bond to pay for, to do it. I'm not saying I'm looking to do that, but...
Sounds like a great idea.
I've been doing this too long to figure we can just go there, but...
And you'd be, Little League would be willing to enter into an agreement to maintain...
We would be.
Okay. As well as the trees, the rain garden and the trees?
Correct.
Are those just regular arborvitae or are they the Green Giant?
I don't know 100% the specifics.
He's speaking for this. And the process would be you would come up.
Yeah, again, the tree selection was whatever Bowler determined met code standard. And that's what we put. Again, I have no problem saying, I guess on behalf of Little League, that, you know, we can add more trees if they have a better recommendation. If we go in front of the shade and they say, geez, use these trees, you know, we'll use those trees.
I have much greater comfort knowing that it's going to go before the shade tree, and they'll be able to weigh in on it. Because personally, I think if it's going to be an arborvitae, it should be a Green Giant as opposed to the other. They grow faster. I just planted some in my yard 18 months ago, and they're already, they've grown four feet. So they're fast-growing. Okay, that's all I had.
Beth, you have anything?
Not for the gentleman. I do have a question for the chairman.
Go ahead.
So you have been intimately involved in this process over the last 18 months. In your estimation, do you feel like the process has been followed with fidelity?
For this point, so what we're at is a conditional usage. They get conditional usage and now go through the process. So I think the Little League has made many concessions that appealed to what the neighbors wanted, and I think we should go through the process at this point.
My name is Nicholas Patrone. I live at 4058 Hillside, Ron's neighbor. I've been there 30 years. From my understanding what they just said, you are willing to give approval on a design and build process, correct? That's what it sounds like to me. But we don't have anything in writing as far as drawings or something that we can look at and you can look at and make public.
So what you're getting is approval of a plan. Next comes the architectural renderings and everything else. When they go through planning committee, Shade Tree...
But you're giving them approval for this project.
No, there will be other touchpoints for you to weigh in before the planning commission when they look at the architectural renderings.
Then we should just label this right now and get everything done and out.
This is the process.
Because, you know, Ron touched on it, we've touched on it. The fence that's there in our backyard, township put up. Why? Because we had kids in our backyards. What are you going to do if this continues? They put it up. How are you going to prevent people hopping the fence? People coming in our backyards? What are you going to do about it? Because that fence I didn't put up, Ron didn't put up, township put it up. I think as township residents and taxpayers in here, we deserve a little bit of compensation as far as if you're going to do this and let them build this, that has to be blocked from our view completely. We live there, I grew, my kids grew up there, my son played ball there. I know that. Those batting cages were a disaster 10 years ago when my son played. He's 21 years old. We've never said they didn't need something new, but they can redo what's there. We watched all season last year, from April to October. Those batting cages either were not used purposefully because they wanted to show that those things could not be used, or from what they've been saying, that they have so many kids and so many games to get in, they weren't being used at all. The kids get on the field, they have batting practice on the field, they do their warmups on the field. So the batting cages weren't used. Nice weekend, nice week. Nobody out there now. Why? The fences, all the cages got taken down. And those four tunnels that they speak of, they're not four tunnels. They made them four tunnels. They're two tunnels. They're two tunnels that were cut in half. Heard people complain that you get somebody old enough in there, hits a ball, you're ducking for your life. My son's one of them. I dread when I go in there with my son, because if I throw the ball, even though I'm behind an L-screen, that boy can hit a ball. And that's fine. But those tunnels were cut short to make four by the Little League. They were never like that. When my son first started playing, two tunnels, because they needed the space. Now they want to double it or even triple the size of what's there. I'm just asking, just, you know, do something about it. There's ample space 75 feet over. There are trees that are dying over there. You can see them. Move it over. Put it where people want it, not behind our houses.
We've had numerous meetings with Tom Lumps from Park and Rec with Ron and other neighbors going through place to place, and no other spot was amenable to this batting cage. We had a neighbor meeting, we had a departmental meeting where Ron came and gave sound effects to the board of supervisors. We've done everything we could up until this point, where I feel personally that the Little League has done everything to make things better with the current spot. Other spots didn't work. They've done what they needed to do to this point. They're now going to go through a process, if approved, I'm only one person, if approved, they now go through a process of what's called land development. So when they present their architectural plans to the planning commission, they will then decide if they're good enough. You will have an opportunity there to oppose it or give suggestions on it at that point. They will then go to other committee meetings like Shade Tree, maybe Environmental Advisory Board, I don't know each meeting they're going to go to. But you'll have opportunities at all those checkpoints when they go through the land development. All of this is conditional usage. We're saying it's okay to go to the next portion of this, that the spot is fine. Okay, well, so is there something, is there something new?
I want a compliment. Tonight, hearing Mr. Felici suggest that they're looking at some alternatives for this soundproofing, and one of the best things as a start is some kind of spray insulation. I'm very, very familiar with it, used it on several buildings. If that's the avenue that you're going to, rather than OSHA-approved panels, sheets, fabric, the spray foam insulation or soundproofing attenuation is the way to go. You're on the right path. And if that's the way you're going, I appreciate you checking into it. So, thank you.
All right, Linda, is there something?
I just want to make sure that you...
I just want to make sure that you, because you didn't cover this, okay? That, I appreciate that it's going to go through planning and shade tree, that's all great, thank you very much. The thing that I still didn't hear is how, and you were there, that we are supposed to, and are you considering this letter addressed to you, the in-writing stuff? Because we were told that we were going to be told what teams are playing there.
There was a whole rendering in the packet, that they went through each part of what they were going to address.
Is that considered the in-writing part?
In my opinion, for this point, it was, yes.
Okay. Because I guess I'm very concerned that it's not like some kind of contract, that just we know these are the specific things, particularly with that 8:30 to 8:30. Because does that mean it's automatically going to shut off at 8:30? Because I don't think that's the township rules. I think things can be on in the township to like 10 o'clock, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and so, this is a kind of a different rule. So, I really think that we need a listing of everything they're going to comply with. This 8 to 8:30, great, and it's going to be an automatic shut-off, great. But it needs to be specific listing, that you don't need to go through a rendering of everything, that you have a list of everything that they are planning on doing. And I just think it needs to be to everybody in the Board of Supervisors, not just a letter to you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jimmy.
I can address some of those concerns. So, we can, we can give Park and Rec access to the lights, and 8:30, it's a hard shut-off. Like, that's one of the concessions that we're willing to make. We understand it's 10 o'clock, we're not trying to do that. We were trying to play ball and make it 8:30. As far as the teams that'll be playing there, Little League goes till 12 years old, and then there's the Connie Matt team, 13, 14, and 15-year-olds. Like, that's who will be using the cages. Like, there's no adult teams, like, none of that, and we're trying to prevent it.
It's spelled out, I don't think.
I, I mean, I thought I, I thought I did, but...
This, it's spelled out in the document, this document's part of the public record.
Thank you.
That's a major, that was always a major concern of the residents, of who was going to use it.
Sir, if you're going to address the board, you have to come up.
I'm sorry. And from day one, no offense, fellow folks, but you were very evasive on, on who was going to be the users, and it scared the hell out of us. It really did. We envisioned all kinds of things. People coming in, traveling teams from God knows where, and they're going to be traipsing through our backyards? It's one thing we have township youth, though, as long as that's spelled out, we appreciate it. It's in writing, we appreciate it.
Nobody wants those people coming to use the cages, like outside travel programs, adults, like, we're putting Little League's money up for this, and it's going to cost us north of $500,000. We're not building it for anyone else, like, we're, this is for us, right? This is for our kids. Yes, absolutely.
Who's, who's going to manage access?
Who's going to manage access?
Who's going to have the keys?
To, coaches, coaches and us on the board.
So, it'll be on you to make sure it's locked up at 8:30 P.M.?
Correct. Yep.
Sedell.
Sedell Zove, I don't live near the facility, so I, I'm just responding to what I've heard tonight, and I have two suggestions. Fran, just as you've identified the fact that the details are in the plan, and the plan is part of the record of, of your approval, I would suggest two additional details or conditions be added to the motion to approve, which obviously is the direction you're moving in. One is that you address sound attenuation in some objective standard, that the, whatever is put in place will reduce the sound by X percent.
Just real quick, remember, think of this as a conditional usage. That'll be part of the next process.
Okay, and my second point is with regard to the detention basins, I would again argue that your approval tonight should be conditioned on a standard of performance with regard to maintaining, cleaning, whatever has to be done to those basins. Just to, the two points are to, to create an objective standards that you can measure adherence against, that's all. Thank you.
I'll be very brief, I just have two questions. I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
Me, Joseph, Joe Lee, yeah.
When you said that the plans that's presented on the Bowler sheets conformed to all township regulations, and we talked about the setbacks and all of that, I'm particularly concerned about the rain garden, I'm particularly confused, the state of Pennsylvania says that it must be the municipality that dictates the distance between a rain garden and a private residence. Are you in a position now to confirm that rain garden meets the...
Our township engineer will do that during the land development process.
A lot of these questions are only part of the next process, a lot...
But, but, you see, they're not.
They are.
That's my, no, that's my problem to you. It depends upon what you vote on tonight, and I don't know exactly what you're voting on tonight. But if the vote tonight locks in the proposed location, then these questions have to be answered first. If whatever you're voting on tonight does not lock in the proposed location, then I'm fine.
Tonight will lock in the proposed location.
Then, these questions have to be answered first. Is the rain garden conformant with regulations?
In every, in every plan, we go through what's called conditional usage. Conditional usage is just saying that we're going to move forward to land development. Land development answers all of these questions, whether it's stormwater management, soundproofing, what the structure actually looks like, how it's going to be constructed, all of it. So, you're going to be able to go to a planning meeting where Supervisor Manuel will leave that as the liaison, and he'll ask questions, and you'll have the opportunity to ask all these questions.
And Fran, this is going to have to get reviewed against the chapter, the stormwater management section of the code?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The, the stormwater management standards of the township, this will all get reviewed against that.
Okay, so hypothetically, and then I'm done. Hypothetically, let's assume that the current position of the rain garden is not in conformance with the township standards.
Then they would not be complying with the code, and they'd have to revisit the location.
They'd have to...
They'd have to revisit the location until it complies.
They would have to revisit the location. Or we want to get that down in writing, please?
They have to be compliant with the code, no matter what.
Okay. All right, that's all, thank you.
All right. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All nays? Any, anyone against? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to create a new Township Steering Committee for Abolition Hall, Course and Track property?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. McAnally, want to give a brief description of what we're...
Um, yes, the board and staff have been looking at the Course and Track, Abolition Hall. We believe it's the right decision to have a committee, look at everything down there, look at the inside, the outside, and all the other amenities that are on the tract, and this would be the, the way to do it, to have a new, a new committee formed. And right now, I think what you'd be looking at is volunteers to submit applications to sit on that committee.
All right, so, thank you. So, what we're, what we're dealing is we're creating a steering committee board for Abolition Hall, that will help to direct future usage and plans going forward, and everything will be more ironed out once this committee is formed. We're going to do a public, public process in terms of forming that committee, so we'll be available to sign up, all interested parties, online, like every other committee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any board comment on this? Public comment?
Sedell Zove, if I could just ask Mr. McAnally to clarify by what he means by inside and out. You talking about the acres of...
We're going to be looking at the use of the property in general.
Including the buildings?
Correct.
Okay, and how does this relate to the art center's role? Is that yet to be determined?
So, we're, it's very vague right now.
Okay.
You know, I know we spoke about this before, but it's very vague right now. We don't have a mission statement, we don't have the total goal of the board yet. The board will be created, and then, once the board has a structure, we'll talk about the direction. We're just in the infancy phases of getting this done. We think it's a good move to light the fire and getting things moving in the right direction as far as, you know, the abolition hall and the course and track being used for, you know, our residents and for public usage.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. And I'd like to point out that today is a very important anniversary in the history of this property and the township's role, and with regard to protecting it for posterity. On March 14th, 2013, the Board of Supervisors adopted an amendment to the open space plan, that's 11 years ago to the day, and here are the minutes of that meeting, there was a public hearing, and the Township Board of Supervisors, led by Bob Hart at the time, and a shout-out to Bob, if he's listening, thank you very much, but the open space, space plan was amended to place this property in a priority open space category. So, it's been a long journey for the township, and I'm delighted that the property is forever protected. I, of course, continue to be concerned about maintenance of the open space, removal of the native, of the invasive plants, and planting of natives, and also, probably more importantly, the fate of the three primary historic structures, Huffington House, Abolition Hall, and the Stone Barn, which was converted to a residence. So, I look forward to this steering committee coming into being, and I will be submitting an application to serve. And I will serve, I will serve with pleasure, if I'm, if I'm selected. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Richard Abraham, 670 Bethune Pike in Flower Town. I've expressed my reservations about the role of the art center in preservation of the three significant properties that we're talking about. I, online, already today, submitted an application to be a volunteer on the, on the committee. I don't quite understand, and maybe it's not yet defined, what the relationship is going to be between the steering committee, and what their role and what their powers are going to be, and the art center, and everything else that has to do with the preservation of those properties. Is that yet defined, or not? No?
No, so, we're still in, we're still in the works.
Okay.
We're getting it.
Ready, willing, and hopefully, we serve ably on the committee.
We appreciate your patience.
Thank you. We appreciate the fact that it's getting, it's getting done, it's going to be done, and it'll be wonderful when it is done, but hope I'm around long enough for the process to be completed. Thank you.
Me too. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of a, I'm sorry, a 902 grant application to PA Department of Environmental Protection, in the amount up to $250,000 for rubber tire wheel loader to be used for the leaf collection program and compost management?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes, this is a DEP grant, it's through the Recycling Collection Committee through the, the state, and they will, it's a $200,000 grant. Today, the original agenda said $230,000. Today, I received an updated quote for the, the wheel loader of $250,000. So, we are going to, I'm looking to authorize the advertisement of the, the grant application. We will submit the grant application and see if we are lucky enough to be awarded.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to authorize the Township Manager to execute all documents for the Green Ribbon Trail Access Improvement Plan application through a multi-municipal grant application?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes, this is, the Green Ribbon Trail comes through seven municipalities, we're looking at six different crossroads that the trail bisects a roadway, and we're looking to put signage up, maybe some signals and crosswalks in those six different areas. The total estimated cost is roughly $70,000, so the maximum amount that we are, that we could possibly, hopefully, we get all the money to do all the improvements, it wouldn't cost the township anything. If it's split, uh, split between the seven municipalities, it's roughly $6,000 should be the maximum amount for the six crosswalks throughout the, the seven municipalities.
Thank you. Any board comment?
Great investment.
Any public comment? Mr. Blomstrom?
Just to clarify, it's a plan that's being developed, not the actual implementation of a sign being hung. I just wouldn't want anybody to agree with that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve a certificate of appropriateness for 40, 44 Butler Pike, for replacement of shingle roof with similar roof material in Historic District?
So moved.
Second.
Is that Charlie?
Thank you. This is a proposal on a non-contributing building in the Historic District. It's actually an out parcel of the lands that the township owns, the Abolition Hall property and the Hobb property, Butler Pike wrap around this building. I'm sure you've seen it in the past, it's a long branch house with a real estate office attached to it, and it's just a shingle roof that is aged and is being replaced with a new shingle roof. Harb reviewed this at the meeting on February 14th, recommended a certificate of appropriateness, so staff is asking for the board to approve that.
Thank you, Charlie. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve a certificate of appropriateness for 55 East Germantown Pike, for replacement of five windows consistent with Historic Properties Guidelines?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This is a historic building on Germantown Pike, between Meeting House Road and Marple Lane. They are replacing two windows on the front, and three windows on the west side of the property. All of the windows are visible from Germantown Pike, and therefore, the jurisdiction of Harb. The windows conform with Historic Guidelines, they are being replaced in the same location, same size, same number of lights or panes with the dividers, and appropriately done based on the Historic Guidelines. So, again, Harb recommended approval at the February 14th meeting, and we're seeking approval of certificate of appropriateness.
Thanks, Rob. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve Real Estate Tax Appeals Order and Settlement for the five following locations, with a total refund equalling $2,067.87 for the 2023 tax year? 2166 Harb's Lane, 2168 Harb's Lane, 1,000 River Road, Manor Road, parcel number 65-00-10066-02-1, and Manor Road, parcel number 65-0 underscore 10066-05-7?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes, it's just five appeals that they were successful in getting, reducing their assessments, totaling $2,067.87. We will be refunding them.
All right, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the allocation of funds to Barron Hill Fire Company in the amount of $1,090? amount of $1,090.73 for their participation in the annual spring shedding, shredding day event on Saturday, March 2nd, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes, this is, Barron Hill came out and helped with the shredding event. I think I counted about 20 volunteers from the fire company out there that day in the rain and the cold. Tom's crew was out there as well, and they're going to split some of the proceeds that came in for $1,090.73 that goes back to the Barron Hill Fire Company for their help.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve escrow release number 10, Phase 1 and 2, in the amount of $17,077.50 to the Oaks at Lafayette Hill, S L D number 06-04?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Krista?
Yes. Like you said, this is escrow release request number 10 for Phase 1 and 2 of the Oaks at Lafayette Hill in the amount of $17,077.50. Following this release, there would be remaining $234,245.23. Our office has inspected the site and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plan, and we're recommending this release.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve escrow release number 11 in the amount of $44,919.72 to 901 Washington Street, S L D number 05-14?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This is, again, as you mentioned, 901 Washington Street, which is also known as River Place. It is release request number 11 in the amount of $44,919.72. After this release, there will be remaining in escrow $734,562.9, and our office has inspected the site and found the improvements constructed in accordance with the plans, and are recommending this release.
Thank you. Any board comment? Public comment?
Sedell Zove, if I could draw your attention to page 55 of this evening's packet, which is Rockwell Associates' letter memo to Krista Heinrich regarding this request for escrow release. And in his memo, he writes, among other things, "The plants in the retention area have been silted in," and then parenthetically, "soil flushing from previous storms that is now over the root plate of these plants. The soil should be removed by hand. Also, debris and branching that has floated in should be removed. After each storm, the community should perform an inspection of any possible damage from floodings and rising waters. On January 10th, after a day of heavy rain, the river overflowed its banks and silted in the detention basin at this property. There was significant debris that floated onto the, the brand-new public trail along the river's edge between the river and the detention basin, and that debris and the water actually made it over into the detention basin. The water and debris made it all the way to Washington Street." I have two concerns. One is that Mr. Hosbach says that the community, meaning the development, the townhouse community, should perform an inspection of any possible damage from flooding and rising waters in the future after each storm. And that, we need to ensure that there is compliance with that, because the detention basin became a bathtub for the river and all the debris. And that was on January 10th, when the river only reached a minor flooding stage. It wasn't significant flooding. And my second concern is that our zoning hearing board allowed this development to proceed, granted a variance, allowing the development to construct townhouses within the floodway. As you know, the, the developer here and the developer on the adjacent property has requested that FEMA move that floodway line closer to the river, not further away, but closer to the river, which would allow future development on the David Bridle site at 1001 Washington Street to occur without a variance, because they, they wouldn't be building, or probably not be building, in the floodway zone. So I'm very concerned about Mr. Hosbach's observations. I'm concerned about future compliance with his recommendations, but more importantly, I'm concerned about what's going to happen on the adjacent property if that floodway line is moved closer to the river. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the final escrow release number 28 in the amount of $125,000 to the Reserve at Creekside, project number 2020-04022?
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
This is the final escrow release for the Reserve at Creekside in the amount of $125,000 even, which was just the outstanding retainage being held until they addressed punch list comments. But they have closed out all their permits with PennDOT, the Conservation District, D E P, and completed the punch list items, and we are recommending this final release.
All right, thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $830,491.86, payroll totaling $628,853.88, and pension plan costs totaling $3,443.17 for February 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That'll take us to the public comment period. Any public comment? All right, Sedell.
Sedell Zove, I have a question that you might want to ask your solicitor to address, and that is with regard to the establishment of the Steering Committee for the Course and Property, or any other committee or commission within the township. My reading of the charter is that one must be a resident of the township in order to serve on any of the township's committees, commissions, or boards. And I, I just want to confirm that my understanding is correct.
That is correct. Yes?
Yes. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any board comments? All right, hearing none. A motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Executive session.
Executive session.
Oh, executive session, I'm sorry. We did have executive session prior to the meeting, where we discussed real estate and personnel. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.